It's just after six o'clock, so I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Missoula County Public School Boards. We know that we're missing a few people, but we do have a quorum, so why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the agenda for this meeting was included in your packet. Are there any revisions to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Jeff, sorry, trustee Aguirre's. A second? Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. In addition, we have two sets of minutes. The first for the Special Board of Trustees meeting to welcome the student trustees. Are there any questions or revisions to these minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Trustee Sherman, thank you. Trustee Aguirre, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, and then we have a second set of minutes for the regular Board of Trustees meeting on October 11th. Are there any questions or revisions to these minutes? Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, trustee Witt. A second? Thank you, trustee Aguirre. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, included in your packet is also written correspondence that was received since the last regular meeting of the board. Montana law requires school districts to set aside a time for public comment on any matter not otherwise listed on the agenda. During the public comment portion of the meeting, each speaker is given three minutes. The board will remind everyone in attendance to avoid violations of the individual right of privacy when providing comments. By law, the board cannot take any action on any matter discussed during public comment as these matters are not specifically noticed on the agenda. The board may take a matter raised during public comment under consideration for inclusion on a future agenda. Does anyone from the public have comments regarding non-agendum items?
We do have a comment from the public tonight. Would you please approach the little table here at the front and say and spell your name?
Hi, my name is Ashley Schleicher. Oh, hi. My name is Ashley Schleicher. That's spelled A-S-H-L-E-E. Schleicher is S-C-H-L-E-I-C-H-E-R. I am the family engagement manager over at the Missoula Food Bank, and I just wanted to come and say thank you very much for taking the time to write an op-ed in the Missoulian in support of Universal School Meals. We really appreciate that, and we've been working really hard on the School Meals campaign. We've entered the second year of a grant cycle for that campaign where we're working on having Missoula County Public Schools be involved in the community eligibility provision. And so what we're doing right now with that is we're working on increasing SNAP outreach and access. We're working with some of the FRCs in the elementary schools to get families signed up on SNAP. We're also increasing our SNAP outreach hours at the Missoula Food Bank where we're helping our customers get signed up for SNAP. And we're also helping try to reduce that stigma that might come with some families and children with using school meals. One of the things that we just did is this last week at Hawthorne, we took the time to film a commercial, which you'll start to see airing after the election cycle where we're talking about reasons that school meals are really important to families and what it means to them and how those COVID waivers really helped them. We're also taking the time this Thursday at the Missoula Food Bank from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. We'll be hosting a parent listening session where we're going to be having conversations with caregivers and just asking them, what does school meals mean to you? How does it affect your family? Do you qualify right now for free reduced meal forms? What are things that are maybe barriers to being participating in that program? And so we're just hoping to have some conversations with a lot of families. They don't have to be Food Bank customers, just anyone in our community is invited, and you are all cordially invited, and Chipotle and childcare is provided as well. So we hope to see you there, and just I want to thank you so much for all your time and support in this, and I hope to be here about once a month and give you updates on what we're doing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
None.
Thank you. So we're now to number six on the agenda, reports and announcements. Included in the packet is the Routine Health Insurance Trust End Report for September 2022. There will be no oral report, but are there any questions or comments on the written report? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to announcements from the superintendent. Superintendent Russ Lodge will report on items of interest. Superintendent Lodge?
Items of interest, here we go. Ray Cooper is the principal Lowell. She couldn't make it tonight, but asked me to inform the board that you are invited to the West Side Park Opening Celebration on Saturday, October 29th, from four to six. So a lot of work has been undergone over at Lowell to get this accomplished. So the West Side Park Opening Celebration at Lowell is this Saturday, October 29th, from four to six, if you can be there. More announcements, really. Want to remind you, November 7th is the 4:30 to 7:30 meeting that's scheduled with the consultant for the superintendent's search, followed on the 15th, which is our next board meeting, so just a reminder about that as well. Thank you for all that you've done to get out of your typical workdays and if you can, and join us with school visits. We have more to go. They're scheduled really through the early part of November, so I appreciate it when you can make it, and I know it's not easy all the time. Also scheduled, Tracy has put it on the agendas for you, November 10th, November 11th, November 14th. So I'd like to do some three-on-one meetings with board members. It gives you a chance to ask questions about topics that maybe you've been wondering about that you haven't had the chance to do in this public setting. I would imagine we're going to talk a little bit about facilities, and we're going to talk about budget and all those topics that are headed our way. So you'll probably see those if you haven't looked ahead a little bit, but November 10, 11, and 14. And then finally, I just want to let you know that, because I don't think I have made you aware of this, every Monday, basically from four to five, I meet with, on one Monday, I meet with a K-5 union leadership. The next Monday, I meet with middle school. Next Monday is high school. And then the following Monday is the classified, basically superintendent's advisory council. And then we just roll it over each month, and that works out really well. It's good communication. I get good feedback. People get a chance to ask questions, and usually Amy or Vinnie sit in with me depending on which group it is. But I just want to let you know that that's part of our daily and monthly routines, so. So just those announcements, Lowell School, November 7th, 15th, the upcoming three-on-ones, and a chance, if you want to think about it, something that you want to bring to that meeting, and we could discuss some things in detail that maybe we don't get a chance to hear all the time. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Moving on then to new business. First, under Finance, Operations, and Maintenance, we'll be asked to approve transportation route mileage changes for both elementary and secondary schools. Pat McHugh, Executive Director of Business and Operations, will present a report on bus routes and their daily mileage, which do require our approval. If approved, the bus routes will be submitted to the county superintendent of schools to review and approval by the county transportation committee. The route information is then sent to the Office of Public Instruction for the calculation of our state reimbursements for the first semester of the 2022-23 year. So, Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. So this is a recurring item that the board will see. You'll see it twice a year, first semester, and then again in second semester. What is reflected on page 11 are reimbursable routes with mileage. And as Chair Walker Andrews mentioned, these routes and mileages need to be approved by the board. They'll go to the Transportation Committee on Friday, they meet on Friday, for approval, and then to OPI for approval. With those approvals, it'll establish the reimbursement rates for the first semester based upon these actual mileage submittals. If you look on page 11, you'll see the miles per day. It's listed under miles for semester 2022-2023. Across the top column, it's about the seventh column heading. The routes listed are both elementary and high school district routes. There's an index at the bottom of the report that shows what each of those letters on the far left column represent. And elementary AM, actually, if you look at the index, it'll show the route segments. There's a middle school AM, grade school AM, high school AM, middle school PM, grade school PM, and then the high school PM. So those are those letters that are reflected there down the left column. The shaded rows represent the Seeley-Swan routes. And then you'll also note about six, five rows down, there's a, or six rows down, there's zero mileage for a route. So we wanted to maintain the route, but there's currently no mileage against the route. But that's still listed as a route that may become active. Page 13 has the same information, but for our special needs routes. So with that, I answer any questions?
I do have two questions. One is this morning when we were visiting Willard, they mentioned that those students go to their home site high school and then are bused from there to Willard. Is that?
Burley, is that right? We have our transportation guy here, fortunately, so, yeah.
Yes, that is accurate. And then they shut, they basically grab a shuttle and go to Willard. That's true.
I guess that's the most sensible way to do it, but, yeah.
Yeah, the students at Willard are geographically all over the city, and it just makes sense to, instead of having a whole different route that we just utilize the routes we currently have to get them to their home school.
And then my other question is, do we need to break these apart and approve them separately, elementary and, or all together?
I would do them all together, yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the recommendation that we approve the bus route mileage changes for the first semester of 2022-23? Trustee Aguirre, thank you. And do we have a second? Mr. Trustee Witt, any more discussion or public comments? Seeing none, would you please raise your hand if you are in favor of the motion? Any opposed? It's passed. Next, we have a topic on the award bid for asbestos abatement for Sentinel High School Building 300. And I believe both Burley McWilliams and Trevor Laboski will speak to this.
Thanks. I know the boards had some discussions regarding Building 300 and renovating it into a health and wellness training center. There is a group called the Power, sorry, Purple Power Project that's doing fundraising for this project. They're planning on doing three phases. The first is abatement, which includes some demolition. Then we would do design and development, and then ultimately construction. We put the request for bid out for abatement of the project. We received three responses. And after reviewing those bids, the lowest responsible bidder was Abatement Contractors Montana. We're asking the board to approve, pending a successful negotiation that we award that project to them. I can answer any questions you have regarding the abatement project, and then Trevor's also here to answer any questions about the project itself.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Trevor up, if you would, Trevor. I asked him to come as well just to speak about the project from the principal's perspective. He's already done this for our facility committee, but I thought the value of the whole board could hear Trevor's thoughts. You are on.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Laboski, T-R-E-V-O-R-L-A-B-O-S-K-I. And I spoke at length at the Facility Subcommittee Meeting on the 23rd of September. I'm happy just to take questions if you have specific things, or I can, I can talk all night. I can turn this into a long meeting if you'd like.
I think a quick summary would be nice.
Sure. You know, I think the main, the main questions I got in the Subcommittee Meeting had to do with space. Sentinel's at about 1,400 students. We have the largest population, I believe, of all the three urban high schools. We have roughly 98 teachers, and that's a total FTE of about 75, just over 75. So some of those people are part-time. We have about 81 and a half rooms, depending on what you consider to be a room, a classroom space, or a space that we use for breakout rooms, that sort of thing. We have 15 teachers teaching in multiple rooms. So of the entire faculty, there's only 15 who are teaching in multiple rooms. Four of them are PE, which is expected. They typically use multiple rooms. One is art. So she has a regular classroom and a ceramics classroom, which is, again, pretty typical. Two are CTE, so our shop space. They also have a classroom space as well. One is a science teacher who's part-time, so comes in at different periods. And then two are special ed, which is also pretty typical to have multiple spaces. So that leaves five core academic teachers who are actually teaching core academic subjects in multiple rooms. So they're room sharing. So that's not really a lot for a school the size of Sentinel. So the big question was, do we need that space for classrooms? Do we need it for space for classrooms? No. Would we want it to be classrooms? No. In terms of a traditional classroom that you're probably all thinking of, and that really has to do with the fact that the building's disconnected from the building. This would be a PE facility and a special education facility during the day. So yes, those students would be going out to those areas, but they're oftentimes already going outside into different spaces anyway for those activities. So, you know, I would say in conclusion, it's, it's an improvement to a space that's being unused. It's a huge improvement, and it's a parent-initiated improvement project, and it's already got a lot of excitement at the school.
Does anyone have any questions? Yeah?
Just for Burley, but this particular thing is just an up or down vote on an asbestos abatement contract that does not bind the district to anything beyond that. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be just the abatement and the demolition of the inside of the building. The remaining, the whole building's going to stay standing, but everything else inside is, it's going to be gutted out.
Can you remind me, maybe I missed it, but when this came up on to us? Can you remind me, because didn't this come up to us earlier and we said to wait on it? And then did it go to Facilities Committee, and then more questions got answered? I just am like looking for the process, how we got back to this right now.
Yeah, that's correct. It was an informational item. I'm not sure what month. And it predated Trevor's arrival, so it was before the start of the school year. And then Trevor had an opportunity to get up to speed, and then he talked to the Facility Committee. Some of the questions that the board had at the time, it was an information item, is, you know, what about other potential needs that the school might have for space and that type of thing? Some of the things that Trevor's answered here tonight. And then I would look to Russ or Burley to remind me of other questions that had come up.
No, that was, that was basically, yeah. It came, it came as an information item prior to Trevor. The principal's position was being filled at that time. We just thought it was really important that the principal take the lead. And then Trevor has come on on July 1, had time to evaluate his needs, his master schedule, all the things. And he, and I act like he's not in the room. He said, at the facility meeting, it was clear that as far as classroom space, it was not an issue. And so a building that we have that is not being used, that is not connected to the main building, which is not what we ideally want anyway, that this would be a good use of the space. And Trevor, anything to add to that? Please jump in.
I had a quick question. Is that the space that's now being used by the robotics team?
Correct. This last school year did, but there's plans for us to accommodate everybody. Am I correct? We've talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, robotics is a district-wide program. The instructor or the advisor is a Sentinel teacher, so it's housed currently at Sentinel. There's, they're not using it now because that building has been emptied. You know, in terms of space after school for that, it's not an issue.
Anyone, yes?
Maybe we're not, this is more of a comment, but first, so to me, sort of the question is, I, at the facilities meetings, I, after hearing from Trevor, I was a lot more, a lot of my concerns resolved. But I still think this right here is not a commitment that we're doing the whole thing, as I understand it. Because I would think we'd want some more, and I think I would support it, but I just don't understand this to be that decision. We could still at the end say no, and we got free asbestos abatement. That's not what I understand this vote to be.
But the, but the vote, when in the information lists this as part, lists the project as part of the asbestos abatement. Look, that's, I'm just, I just wanted to get caught up on where we got back from here, from the informational meeting, where as a board we were like, whoa, hey, wait, to let's check it out for asbestos and move forward on this project. That's all.
Yeah, the recommendation is basically, as you're saying, trustee Mercer, that the trustee award abatement contractors be given the contract for abatement of Building 300 using fundraising dollars. And it doesn't commit us to how that building will be used.
But we're using the fundraising dollars from Project Parent Purple for this, but so it's like read between the lines. I'm not disagreeing with it. I think it's great. I just wanted to make sure, one, Lego Robotics is not being kicked out. Two, that it, we're reminded as a board that when this was, came as information, that we said, let's look into this further, and where did we get from now stepping forward with it? That's all.
Any other comments? Yes?
Kind of along the same lines, you know, reading this, it says the fundraising effort will renovate Building 300 into a health and wellness training center. So it's almost like we're committing to that, is how it reads. I understand we're just voting on the asbestos abatement for now. My other question would be, if we have votes to approve this, but later we don't approve the other phases for health and wellness or whatever, is anybody going to be mad at us for using these dollars to do this now, but not proceed with the rest of what is in this summary?
The fundraising for the rest of the project is going to take about a year. So we have a ways off to see how this all shakes out and develops. This first part, the money is available, the money's been raised. We can meet this contract with those dollars, but then it'll be a while before we, before the parent group that's sponsoring this has raised the money they need, probably a year from now, to move on to the next phase. And then we can take into consideration at that point in time whatever unusual things might be presented to us. But Meg makes a point. I mean, between the lines, we're, this is a subtle, if not obvious statement, that we are supporting the project. You are supporting the project, and we're moving forward with board approval for the abatement. But I would think to some degree for the project in general.
Trustee Sherman?
I think it's amazing that the parents are getting involved. If they see a need and they're willing to step up and help out, then I think that's awesome. So I commend them for that.
Trustee Mercer?
So, I guess, because I heard early on this that Burley preferred not to approve anything until there was fundraising, until it was fund rate, to not do things partially. The money was in place, and then we do it. And I thought this was broken off because we fundamentally, I guess if we are treating this as an implicit doing of the project, then I think we should pause and approve the project. To me, this was, no, wise eyes wide open. If they don't want to fund this, they are taking a risk. I mean, I hope it's not a big one, but I, we are not, by my understanding, we are not committing to do the project by doing the asbestos. If we are implicitly, then let's just hear about the project and let's vote on the project. I mean, I, I'm, yeah.
If I can, we are not committing MCPS dollars to this project. That's not in this discussion. So I want to make that clear. As we stand right now, we are not committed to move forward with this project if the fundraising wouldn't come through. So I want to be clear about that.
Trustee Aguirre?
Thanks. Excuse me. So not to relive the entire Facilities Committee Meeting, but a few things. And Burley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been made clear to the group that this is a step-by-step project, and there's no promises past this approval. So whether they feel it's implied or not, they should be very clear that at this point, the fundraising and the implementation of this project is only getting asbestos out of our schools. I would have a real problem not taking free money to get asbestos out of one of the buildings in our schools just because we're worried that we're implying that a project would possibly go on down the road. That would make zero sense to me. I think this is a no-brainer. I think the next two steps are bigger discussions, and I think we will have those discussions. Trevor made very clear in our facilities meeting that this will never be used as classroom space. If we need more classroom space at Sentinel, your exact words were, we'll go ask for a bond measure and we'll expand the school itself. There's safety concerns by having more classrooms outside of the building. He likes having the students as much as possible inside the buildings with all the locked doors. So this is, there's a lot to this. It was a, it was a long discussion, our facilities meeting, but this step, I don't think there's anything implied, not in the facilities meeting or in this meeting, should anything be implied. I think this is a layup for the school district. It's no money out of pocket to get asbestos out of one of our buildings, and that's the way we should look at it today.
Anyone else? Trustee Mercer?
Last thing. So I agree with all that, and also the other thing that was very persuasive to me was this would free up what is current weight room space inside the building for some potential rest of it. So I probably think, I just, to me, if these fundraisers are nervous about, I guess, what I'm saying or whatnot, that they might well want to hold off and say, well, we want to come back to you, and we want to get full approval on everything before we pay for the asbestos. And I would totally respect that. I'm just saying right now, when I vote for this, all I'm voting for is the asbestos. I'm just saying, right now, when I vote for this, all I'm voting for is the asbestos.
Burley, is that kind of what the understanding is from your perspective?
Yeah, it is. We've, we've made it clear that we don't, we don't typically like to take donated money and start a project. We don't have the funds, the entire funds available. This project, the way they've divided it up into three, in the abatement, then the design development, then the construction, ultimately worked out pretty well when you talk about fundraising. You can fundraise each one of those separately. And really, there's no harm to the district until the construction project starts at that point in time. But I do believe that, you know, there, this is a lot of money, there's a lot of time and energy that the group's putting into the fundraising effort. And I think that it's getting important that we take that into consideration as well.
And just adding to what Burley said, if this were a school-funded project that was completed in phases and the funding for the various phases, depending on a length of time, the board could change their approach with, within or before each phase. And so it's not anything contrary to what we would typically do as a board or have that expectation as a board. And, and so the, I think it's, it is expected that you would have the ability to approve these in phases. And it's also understandable that an effort's going to be made to fundraise here. I mean, and so it's going to be difficult, given that effort, to unwind that. I think the, the point though is that there's a lot of unknowns, one of which is how long it'll take to fundraise. Russ talked about the one-year timeframe, but if it takes longer, then, you know, there may be other things that come up that have to, this board needs to move on. So it will be approved in phases and this is the first phase.
Other comments? I was going to make one. I agree with what you said about it being a great thing and what you mentioned about people wanting to give, fundraise. I guess my only concern is that people be very aware, as they give funds, what those particular funds would be given for. I mean, if I, and I'm not, was suddenly to give a million dollars to Sentinel School and then find out it was really going to Big Sky, say, I would be upset. So it just seems people should know very clearly what they're giving money to at each point. Is there any public comment? Could we have a motion to approve the recommendation that the trustees award Abatement Contractors of Montana with the abatement of Building 300 located at Sentinel High School, using fundraising dollars to cover the cost? Trustee Evgiras is second. Trustee Sherman? Any more discussion? Yes? I, it's just like I go, first name? Trustee Witt?
Well, thank you for not putting me as Keegan and Witt, because that has happened. So I, yeah, I wanted to wait till this point, because I was at the meeting as well. I plan to vote for this. I think, you know, like this asbestos mitigation needs to happen regardless. And I want to make a point that I am not saying I'm fully on board with everything. I wouldn't want a group to be out there and be like, we fundraised, we can do this, and now the school is just going to have to do it because we gave you the money? Like, not at all the way I want to operate. It has to fit within the strategic plan. If someone can't sell it to me within the strategic plan, I'm not voting for the overall project. So my vote today is just for the asbestos. And that's the way everything is written and the money is raised. And so I have no problem saying, yeah, let's get the asbestos out.
Thank you. Any other further comments or can we, sorry? Just a minute. Trustee Wilek?
I'm on the same page. I think we kind of share the same concerns right here, is that we don't want this to be considered a down payment for a for-sure plan for what is written as the future phases. So I also have no problem taking free money and making these improvements. I think that's great, but I don't want it hung over us later as, hey, well, we did this because now we have to do that. Kind of the same vote is same deal as everybody else. Want to make that clear.
Any more comments? Are we ready to take a vote? Again, public comment? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the recommendation that the trustees award Abatement Contractors of Montana with the abatement of Building 300 located at Sentinel High School, using fundraising dollars to cover the cost? All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Passed. This agenda was very short, so we're at the point where someone could make a motion to adjourn. So moved? Oh, okay, thank you.